Too much debate with respect to the acknowledged need for more housing in our city.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems like a good opportunity to utilise the urban industrial site. I think it's worth noting, can be sympathetic for the one representation that will be affected with the, I guess, backyard amenity, but that was all covered off within the planning report and those matters were addressed in that.
Thank you. Further comments? councillor Murphy to close.
I consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie Dunham, this way, thank you. If we can have councillor Shane come back in the room, councillor Murphy to leave. With your high five on my throne. Thank you. Thank you. Item four point two, we will begin 200 stony rise road and on light form close. Recommendations here if I can have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Martin, thank you. And a second to... councillor Ennis, thank you. That's for Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things if I may. I note in the summary of this item that there's notification in the first matter, the wording says removal of the community purpose zone part of the 200 stony rise. And the second matter, introduction of general residential zone to 200 stony rise road. I just wondered if there was a typo there and a omission of part of 200 stony rise road. The second matter does not state part of stony rise as mentioned in the first matter, so just wondering if there's correction there in that.
Thank you. We'll go with that first if you've got another component as well.
Yeah.
Through you, Madam May, could I get some clarification please?
So in the, in the summary, what's listed as a first matter?
Same page thirty eight, is it?
Yes.
Page thirty eight, at the bottom.
Well, it's actually on the beginning of page seventy nine, so.
Yeah, through you, Madam May. Certainly fine. I understand the question, councillor Martin. It should be introduced part of the general residential zone to 200 stony rise road.
Yes, thank you.
Not all the zones going to general residential.
There are, she was consistent with other notes that I've seen on there. And I think...
Hope you folks got high for that, yeah? So moving right along, item four point four is ten three hundred Bass Highway John.
So moved without condition two point A.
Second. Thank you, councillor Martin. Councillor Wilczynski, the place on two point A.
Drawl of two point A.
And you're happy with that councillor Wilczynski? Councillor Martin to talk to the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great development in a wonderful area. It has significance to the local community. But I note why I took out two point A was that the landscaping in two point B, I've read it now. It shows vegetation located to obscure the covered walkway, to obscure the covered walkway from view from areas outside the site. So I found the two points arguing with one another and I see that if the landscaping provision is provided, that that will screen the building and any proposed walkway, whether it be covered in or not. I'd like to ask a couple of questions, if I may. What does from the road, a roof walkway look like from a planner's point of view, other than that being plaid? What's the difference? I'm looking at covered or obscured by landscaping. What would a roof look like compared to one that has plating along the walkway? My suggestion is, it makes no difference, it's obscured by the landscaping that's going to provide, as in your point now, two A.
Are you asking the question to either of the staff, councillor Martin, or?
Yes, thank you.
Through you, Madam May. Thanks for your question councillor Martin. Certainly take your point. However, I guess the vegetation takes more to mature and actually grow at substantial sources, which is going to cover the actual covered walkway.
Thank you. So the landscaping has been put in there, so it will obscure the view from the road of the development itself. So therefore, it's not necessary to remove the point of having a walkway only roofed. That's a comment on more than a question. Question, how far is the site from the highway? When we start talking about people viewing this area, I'm driving a hundred kilometres along the road and I look left. How far am I looking to look at the site?
Mayor.
Through you, Madam May. Certainly don't know the, I guess, the figure on top of the head, but as you're driving west along Bass Highway, on Lillico Straight, you're going to start to get the visual presence of Don heads. Like judging by the coast of pathway and riding along, there's probably probably a good kilometre.
A kilometre away? Right, so where it says a significant impact on the vista, I would suggest that having to look a kilometre away by driving a hundred kilometres up the road, that it may not be as significant as put into the comments. So I think that having a landscaping there will actually solve the problem of the proponents being able to plaid that walkway. I'll leave it at this moment, if I may. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wilczynski. What I would like to say is that it is a, it should be a covered walkway and it is a farming land, so anything could be built on that, Don heads. So it could be a barn or it could be a glass house, it could be a set of, even plants and trees. So why would we be telling the applicant to actually, you can't do this because of the site? I think we're not being fair to the applicant as you probably won't see four of the units. There are two, three houses already up there on the right and there's also a villa up there already in the same sort of plating. So what difference is there going to make? Particularly when I believe the restaurant has had clearance for it to go ahead. So I think we should go ahead and let it be done without any reservations or what should or shouldn't be there. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Further comment, questions? Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam May. I would probably suggest, if I may, to the movement in secondary, removing condition two altogether then, if they were happy to do that. As was already previously stated, at the end of the day, common sense must prevail. I think the proponents have demonstrated what they've been able to do in that space and they've been sympathetic to the area itself, in the design and the construction. More importantly, if we consider other light types of developments around the state, the significant impact that those developments have had on those local communities. And it would be, you wouldn't have to be a rocket scientist to work out the development that has been undertaken in that area and has had a significant impact on our region with respect to visitation. Providing a unique offering, it's a wonderful experience up there at the code. And I think that only just contributes to the amenity of our region. I'd take councillor Martin's point with respect, what are you going to see at a hundred kilometres an hour coming along the highway? I think it'll almost, it's really interesting from a planning perspective. I think I can only count one time in five, five and a half years that I've gone against the main advice. Now, these are experts in the field. However, top of Don Hill is two telker towers. You know, if we're looking something that's going to destroy amenity, I think those telker towers do more damage than what this will actually do. So look, if the movement secondary are happy, I think condition two doesn't need to be there at all. If they're willing to support that, we'll actually see the removal of that as well.
So last councillor Martin, have you thought about the change?
Well, the whole point of putting in a landscape was to obscure the amenity of the vista of the new development. I'm just sort of battling with it at the moment. Certainly, I would think that having a vegetation or landscaping plan there would certainly screen from the highway. But I'd take on board councillor Murphy's points and yeah, we can remove the two point A or the whole part two.
Councillor Wilczynski, happy with that?
I'm very happy to do that. So for the moment, we're getting rid of the whole section of point two.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Any other further comments or questions in relation to that? Sorry, councillor Holst.
I think it's unnecessary the extent of the shredding there. I don't know what this overlay is doing up there. Like that should have really been more for the Don village. I often see the code from the tourney birds when I volunteer at sea. You can't see any of it from the highway, admittedly. Look a bit of this further, you'll see a bit. It's a fantastic operation and I think we should do all we can to make sure that it keeps going. What's been recognized for, thank you.
Thanks councillor Holst. Councillor Shane?
I'd like to thank the planners for their careful consideration of the DA. I'm a big fan of adding with landscaping to new buildings, just sort of. In this particular case, I'm in agreement with fellow councillors. And just quickly, I wanted to say thank you to the applicant for expanding the existing facility. It's unique, it provides a real point of difference to our tourism and the public. And you've proven we saw very capable operators of that facility, so I wish you the best with the next phase.
Thanks councillor Shane. Have you heard the comment councillor Ennis?
Oh.
Sorry councillor Ennis.
Yeah, thank you. I agree, I agree that landscaping is good. I don't know why we're taking that out. I think you could sort of stop any acts of an outbuilding or something there. Looks like just a bit of additional vegetation from the distance. I'd be inclined to keep that and just remove A as originally suggested.
That will say as much. Councillor Martin?
Yeah, I'll reiterate what councillor Ennis has just said. I understand why we took out the second part of the part two to remove the covering. I don't understand why we removed the landscaping. I thought that was quite important to break up how that's going to be visual. Even if we just think of it as a solid wall, like even if you're going past a hundred and ten kilometres an hour and even if it's going to take a couple of years to grow, it would still, I guess, be more sympathetic to the landscape. My question though to the planners, the overlay that was discussed about, can we just get a little bit more clarification for something that councillor Holst said just confused me a bit?
Mayor.
Through you, Madam May. Thanks for your question. That one's on. Yeah, so I guess the property sits within the Don Lillico Heritage Landscape Precinct. So that's sort of mapped under our local heritage code under the planning scheme. So I guess it's just important to note any development on that side or any properties within that precincts, they require consideration under the heritage code. And there's a very significance under the Don Lillico Landscape Precinct that I guess you're protecting those natural views which you get at Don heads in this area.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with that in mind, on that property, as you're looking at Don heads incoming south, how far back does that overlay go to the existing buildings of all of here?
Through you, Madam May. So the Don Lillico Heritage Precinct, that sort of certainly picks up a, you're probably looking to say, from Don railway station out to Don heads, it's quite large here.
Yes, that's the, that was the clarification I was after, it includes those existing structures. So with that in mind and how I believe the applicants will be sympathetic to the site and to the area because I think they've been there and have an affinity with it a lot stronger than I do. I've got faith that they will do a fantastic job, judging by the development that has been recently within there in the code. But yeah, I would have preferred, as councillor Ennis mentioned, to keep the landscaping in if that was at all possible.
Thank you. Further comments or questions?
If I may.
You've got a question?
No, just a comment, ma'am.
Do you have your policies?
If I may, I just...
Do you have your question?
My question would be, how difficult would it be to grow vegetation in an area such as that exposed to the elements, such as Don Head that is relatively barren and relatively devoid of vegetation? To grow and maintain something in that space would be, I believe, relatively difficult to do, hence the reason why I made the suggestion of removing point three. I think that developers have demonstrated their capacity to be sympathetic to that area.
That was a great question, thank you. It wasn't really, it ended up with a bit of a statement. Councillor Murphy? Further comments or questions, please? Councillor Martin?
Yeah, just a question. If you look on Google Maps, I'm just wondering if councillor Murphy can see vegetation around the other buildings there, existing in that area, if I can do it, so if you can do that.
Further comments, questions? I will just make a comment. One, I've had the luxury of reading the proponents this afternoon to ask them about that walkway and was able to get a bit more clarification on putting on the lip of the Don heads. It's one of the windiest areas, so very hard for landscaping, very hard for vegetation to take hold. Depending on if it's already there, it tends to be very hardy. But if it's not there and you try and plant something and try and get it to grow in that one section, it's almost impossible, not even possible. So it will be very interesting if we enforce that on to the proponent. It does say, item three is landscaping as shown as we above, so there is landscaping on the plan, which will be something that can be achieved on shore. So therefore, I'm quite happy with item two to be completely obliterated and very happy for the vote to continue.
Clarify three there. So if councillors are minded removing point two,
Yes.
point three is there now, so that's referring to the item that was just removed. So my advice is, it's all included. If councillors are minded remove two, my recommendation would be to remove...
Three as well.
You should three as well.
And councillor Martin, feel that out? Fine, councillor Wilczynski? Okay, so we're voting on, we're drawing two and three from the recommendation there. Councillor Martin to close.
Thank you, Mayor. And a good discussion about this development. As we all know, that's a well-recognised and awarded tourism operation. And whilst those items have been removed in regards to landscaping, I would encourage the proponents to consider landscaping of that area. Now it becomes their option, so they still have the ability to do that. You just don't have to make them deal with the condition. Because I honestly think would be improving the amenity, a greater privacy to their development. And as has been mentioned, a possible windbreak as well. I consider the matter closed. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie Dunham, this way. Congratulations, everybody. Good debate. Item five is reports, five point one is the Devonport Events Strategy. The recommendation is there, I'll give it to Murphy please.
So moved.
Councillor Holst, thank you both. Councillor Murphy? Councillor Murphy, I'll take it as a secondary, is that all right?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councillor Holst?
The recommendation there, it's pretty good policy, that's a two thousand and thirty. We're trying, we need to change anything in the meantime, no doubt we can. Quite happy to watch there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor. The Devonport Events Strategy is probably one of the most exciting ones that we've had come across this table in the period of time that I've been sitting on council. This provides us a real opportunity. I'm looking forward to the consultation that we will receive. Council has demonstrated in recent times its capacity to actually engage with the community and seek feedback with respect to the developments of strategies. Really looking forward to the feedback we get from this one, but more importantly, taking into consideration that we've just held one of the second biggest events on Devonport's calendar over the weekend, the Rotary Club of Devonport North, the annual motor show. This is going to provide a really unique opportunity and framework for organisations such as Rotary Club Devonport North, but also sporting clubs and everybody else to further enhance those events. So really looking forward to the feedback that we're going to receive and see how that's compiled over the next thirty days. And then looking forward to this policy coming back to council for endorsement.
Thank you. Further comment, questions? Use the lights. Councillor Martin?
There's a light. Thank you, Mayor. Agree with councillor Murphy there. I think it's an exciting time to be in Devonport, feels like every month, there's something new to look forward to. I thought the last few weeks have been absolutely stacked with things to do. Yeah, the motor show, I think there was superheroes down at the Bluff Saturday as well, Sunday, I think, as well. So there's things going on a lot. For someone who should have their finger on the pulse and be aware of them, I'm still discovering new things all the time. So what is great is that with such a big activation down there, Hakenhead Point on Sunday. And I was waiting to hear back from one of the council offices if there was any complaints over the weekend.
Through you, Mayor. Not that I'm aware of this stage. Sometimes it does take a number of days for feedback from the community to trickle through, but none at this point, no.
So I've found that probably the most positive part is that you've got massive activation in that area. I drove down there with my sons just for a little drive-by look. Roads were closed, there was harking everywhere, there was people everywhere. And not one complaint, so that's fantastic.
Good point councillor Martin. Thank you. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, I'm also excited about the event strategy. I was a bit disappointed that only twenty people actually did comment for feedback. I was hoping there would be more feedback than that. But I guess no news is good news in this case because it means that most people are on board with Devonport having lots of events. I'm also excited about the fund which the events get run through and the criteria that will be around events.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Excuse me, two things. I think maybe there's a bit amount of trust with the Devonport community in terms of events, the way that things are run. So that's probably a positive thing. And secondly, I did have a comment about Hakenhead Point today, how wonderful the grass is out there since it's been watered. And the comment was, it looks really good and they love the event there. And things that go, and I didn't happen to mention the sensors and person was well aware that councillors having sensors in the ground and knowing not to order, it's a clean water, so good thing.
Which is very environmentally friendly. Thanks councillor Ennis. Any further comments? Councillor Shane? She's singing.
Um, just like to note all the work, the one year's event strategy and the council staff for putting together such a great document. The ground up, the community feedback, but the other thing I noticed is that it must be quite reassuring for accommodation providers in the city to see such a robust events plan, instead of stagnant events seasonally a bit more. Which would be a good idea.
Thank you. If I can just note that I thank the councillors for also having input into this. We work with Carol Bright, she's done a really amazing job as usual. But what goes with this now is now that we've got the strategy, put it out to the community, we've got the feedback that we need. And now going forward, the exciting part is this collaboration to inspire community and organisations and the private sector to lead partner or support events. So it's not just about council putting on events only, it's all about us encouraging pervy examples on the weekend for the wonderful Devonport Rotary North, putting on their motor shows they do every year. But it's about not only still facilitating that and making sure they do theirs to the best of their ability, but to encourage others to come to us now, to say, hey, I've got this great idea. We'll tell you if it's not, we'll tell you if it is, but the point is, come to us and now this is your time to approach us because we've got this proper strategy in place so that we can make it work, not just for Devonport but for the region. And exactly that, the avalanche effect of what it does for the economy, for accommodation, for tourism, you name it. People, it's only going to work for everybody, so the environment as well, we're aware of that as well. So I thank everybody and all the work that's been done so far, so it's great to get this endorsed. I will ask councillor Holst to talk.
Yes, I think this weekend was a good example of how our events people and the community can hang different things on all at the same weekend. We're looking at time, add things to that to make it a bigger event. This weekend was good with the, we had people upstairs, we had people in Market Square. They're in Haynes Place and they're able to sit out of Hakenhead. So the more things that we can hang on, hang together, will be very beneficial to the community. So the strategy is going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie Dunham, this way. Marvellous. Five point two is the memorandum of understanding for the University of Tasmania. The recommendation is there, if I can have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Moore and councillor Ennis. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, I'd like to support this report. I think it's an exciting development for both Devonport and for the University of Tasmania. There's a lot of positives to this report. Anything that we can strengthen allied health in Devonport is a positive for both the community of Devonport and for the students that will be training and working with our community. I note that any minor modifications, the cost of those will be met by UTAS and that this really does fit with... and that this really does fit with both our strategic plan and our wellbeing strategy.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. It is great that the University of Tasmania is now entering Devonport and in a very positive way, and particularly with, uh, health promotion and disease prevention, and which is certainly an identified, uh, area of concern for us around here. And not only, uh, in Devonport region, but along the northwest, in Braden in particular. So, uh, this will only assist and help, and I think it's just great that, uh, we're going to have this, so I'm going to wholeheartedly support this.
Thank you. Further comments? Councillor Martin.
I do, thank you, mayor. Uh, I agree with the previous speakers, this is, this is great for Devonport and I think it's important, uh, for East Devonport that, um, an area that's probably a little bit underutilised is going to have a new lease on life, um. Only concern if there is any is that the existing user groups won't be affected by this. Question mark.
Through, through this discarding?
Through you, mayor. Um, certainly there's additional activity planned as part of this, um, agreement with University of Tasmania. Um, since the facility has been, or was used as the COVID testing clinic, we have seen some user groups relocate from the site and some returning, um, since the clinic's no longer there. Um, the majority of the activity will be during non-business hours, which is the lower utilization period for the facility typically, from a community recreation point of view. Um, but certainly there's still capacity to support a high degree of community access to the facility as well as not the exclusive use arrangement. Um, UTAS will have some permanent, um, administrative facilities on site and also be using the four high spaces at different periods and integrating their activities with other community activities that we host concurrently at the site as well.
Thank you.
Comprehensive answer.
Very good, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Martin, to the last time, yes?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I'd like to endorse the points by councillor Moore in regards to anything we can do to strengthen allied health, uh, in Devonport, as councillor Ennis might have along the northwest coast as well. Uh, we've been, as a region, as a community, uh, singing out for this type of support, uh, for many, many years and it's finally arrived, so it's great that it's happening in Devonport. Uh, suggests that, uh, the students that attend under the, uh, UTAS banner that we try and get them married off as quickly as possible to anybody as single in Devonport.
Right.
Thank you.
Excuse me, councillor Martin. Further comments? Councillor Wiltchinsky. Just got the gig on.
Sorry, uh, councillor Martin, I'm not sure about the last bit of your comment, but, um, yes, allied health is definitely needed and, uh, as, um, Jared Ennis, uh, councillor Ennis has said, our Braden area is high in heart disease, diabetes and asthma. So it's something that we really need to see why, and maybe having UTAS here might, uh, help us within that, so definitely agreed, whatever you. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? You want councillor Moore to close?
Nothing to add, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously, wonderful. Five point three is the Torquay Road right strict upgrade, the recommendation is there, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Martin, uh, second of all, second. Councillor Moore, councillor Martin.
Thank you, mayor. I, um, trust the tender process, that the councillors were robust in this instance. Uh, I see that while there's contracting, there's an order for main contract, and I think it seems like this is some overdue work that had been flooding in that, um, lower East Devonport area, so that's great. Um, I think the tender planning and evaluation committee for their work to, uh, give the best value for money to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moore.
Uh, just adding to councillor Martin's notes, um, I note there is a contingency of seventy-seven thousand-ish. I note that the pipe has already been ordered to streamline this process and that it is coming in, looks like it's coming in under budget of fifty thousand dollars from our budgeted amount.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, please? Councillor Holster.
There's a big hole outside the arcus, it's, it's at the back. Does that got anything to do with this? Someone's digging a big hole there, I'm reading.
Do you want to know where a hole is?
Three, may I believe so, I don't know, not, not connected, dug a hole.
Not connected to it.
We can find it out.
What it's for?
Uh, come back to councillor Holster on what that hole is.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Councillor Martin, to close, close.
It's not filling with water, is it, the hole? Uh, consider it closed, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously, thank you. Five point four is the financial assistance scheme round two, recommendation is there, if I could have a move please.
Second.
Councillor Shane and councillor Marshall, councillor Shane.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I was pretty impressed with the, um, quality of suggestions through community consultation, which I've got to say is the same every time we have one, because people in Devonport seem to put so much careful thought into ideas, um. I'm looking at the summary and I was reading.
This is five point four.
Oh, sorry, budget consultation.
I'm on my own, I lost you for a minute there. We are five point four, am I right?
Ah, sorry, I'm getting tired myself.
Easy. Do you still want to move five point four? That's the financial assistance.
Yes, I shall, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Shane, would you like to say to five point four?
Yeah, apologies, ma'am, um, it's wrong.
Quick, please.
Uh, yeah, very happy to see Eastern Port, um, bowls club, um, in the major grant, it's the money grant section, um. That club, I know, is a very old-fashioned club where they'll literally drive people home at the end of the night. It's a good old-fashioned community club and I'm glad they're getting some money.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Martin.
Um, thank you, mayor. The quality of the, uh, applications were again high, uh, for our committee and a lot of thought was put into, uh, who should be awarded the funds. There's some great, uh, projects in there, including Devonport Horror Society and, uh, the, uh, uh, Big Sing. Uh, being, uh, yeah, Devonport Big Sing two thousand twenty-four, uh, just shows how diverse our community is and the entrepreneurialism that we have amongst our clubs and the willingness to not only support their organisation but the community themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Councillor Murphy.
Uh, thank you, mayor. It, it's just worth noting that, um, four, um, goes through a fairly robust process with respect to determining, uh, who it awards money to and, um, again, that process is highlighted, um, the, the amount of work that successful applicants are putting into their applications, uh, and the merit of those applications. Um, and unfortunately we can't support everything but, um, very worthy, um, applicants for this round.
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Shane.
You're close, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously, five point five is the twenty-four, twenty-five budget consultation, the recommendation is there, if I could have a move please. Councillor Shane, are you able to?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a lot out. It's all good. And councillor Ennis, we'll start, at least, carry the second side. Thank you. Councillor Shane.
Thank you. Who else? Um. Yeah, very impressed with, um, community feedback. Really, um, liked the idea of the basketball court at the Bluff. Um, and I think I, I can't see it here, I was reading in the attachment, so there was mention of pump track as well. Um, I really look forward to some of these items, uh, coming to budget so that we can, um, discuss them to the break as a group. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis.
A lot of, uh, uh, very enjoyable time reading all of this, uh, the, uh, ideas fantastic, uh. I'm not really going to speak to the ones that I prefer, like the ocean pool or changing up dog heads, so forth, uh, but.
You're not going to speak?
No, I won't, uh, but it's very, uh, I, I think the dome, uh, with the new, um, bridge, that the, uh, well, well, uh. Yeah, the bridge across the dome there, uh, there's a lot more people using dome heads and down that area. So I think, uh, ensuring that we can fix that up and go ahead and, you know, put some signage there, I started signing, it'd be a good thing down there, um. And, and all sorts of stuff because it's a, it's a fantastic space. And, and that, uh, also some very, uh, inventive suggestions, uh, in particularly the Australian Rovers Wildlife Adventure. Caught me, uh, I, uh, uh, caught my eye. So there's a whole lot of things there, um, but certainly, uh, the basketball and, uh, those, those are, um, ideas of having, uh, playgrounds, particularly around that area. Increasing the size and frequency of the playgrounds is a really good idea because, um, we need to have something for our, uh, peo-, our, our young people and families and they are fantastic, so, uh, I'm very happy to, uh, endorse this, uh, for, um, loading.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Councillors, councillor Murphy.
Uh, thank you, mayor, yes, um, quite a significant amount of feedback forward. Um, very interesting, the, I noticed one of them, uh, two, um, number of times it was raised, it was twice. And I know we need a new greyhound track, but we're getting very clever about having a greyhound off-leash exercise park. It's, it's very interesting that, um, and we've, we've got a, a disused greyhound track in the middle town at the moment. I'm sure that could be used as an off-leash area for greyhounds.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Any further comments or questions? Um, I, I, it's enjoyable to write, um, it certainly is, uh, each and every year that we get this, I, I just love the fact that the community actually directs and actually put their two cents' worth in and they're getting better at it every time. And it only helps us to try and make decisions based on what our community needs. So it is an enjoyable process because then we've got some fodder to sit down and talk about and decide, and it's not always easy. But the best thing is at least we've got the community actually telling us what they want from us, so I do enjoy this part of it, um. The budget's probably not as fun, but this part certainly is, so it gets well done. Um, councillor Shane to close.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I, I wouldn't be surprised if, um, one of the reasons we do so well as a city is just at that grassroots level. We get tons of good ideas coming up from the community, um, and just to, um, support councillor Ennis, I, I think Kylie Bell's submission on the dome heads was excellent. I have heard quite a few people talk about how unique that is, um. Oversized playgrounds as well, I think it's very well constructed, but not a topic, um.
Consider it closed, thank you. Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously, we're into, uh, section six information, six point one is workshops and briefing sessions, if I could have a move please. Six point one, councillor Martin, thank you. And that was councillor Murphy, thank you, councillor Martin.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, there was some good workshops this, or good workshop this month, um, I will, uh, save the record that after the Julie Burgess, um, offering to go out on the boat, I did that with councillor Wiltchinsky and my son Vincent, and we enjoyed it thoroughly. Councillor Holster was also there, he was in a working capacity, I think, um, I must have seen the biscuit as well. Uh, Vincent's feedback was probably, it was a little bit, a bit too long, um, he was a bit concerned we were going to go all the way to Melbourne. Um, but yeah, not, not enough wind either was probably the only other, uh, feedback, but yeah, enjoyable time.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Uh, yes, mayor, and had, there is a, a lot coming up on our agenda.
Very true. Further comments? Councillor Martin to close.
Consider it closed, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously, six point two is the mayor's monthly report, if I could have a move please.
Aye.
Councillor Holster, the second was, sorry, councillor Wiltchinsky, thank you. Councillor Holster.
You're busy as ever.
Thank you. Want to have the copy?
Nothing, I'm waiting for it.
Thank you. Councillor Wiltchinsky.
Yes, ma'am, I'd just like to ask about the FOGO launch.
Yes.
So we had a launch, is that why we just had it, are we going on with our communication to the community?
Absolutely. So that's just the beginning of it, so, um, the, the, um, FOGO won't actually roll out until about July, but there is, um, things now being put together through Dalgerton, um, for the councils that are, are going to be operating this system. So, and that's, uh, they're putting a video together, I do believe, and that will be put out very soon. So we're just making starts on all the things we need to do between the launch and when it's actually rolled out in July.
Yes, I was just wondering if it was, I was the only councillor that put their hand up to be on the FOGO, so I wasn't aware the launch had happened. Um, so I'm pleased that you are continuing with further information for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councillor Ennis.
Good. I think maybe mine's a comment, um, I, I, uh, attended the International Women's Day event and I'd just like to say, uh, I've had a lot of feedback from, uh, many people who also attended and said what a fantastic event and the foresight of the council to put something on like that was duly noted and, uh, uh, we were sort of roundly congratulated for that. So I'd like to pass on to all the organisers, uh, what a fantastic job they did and, uh, dare say it will, uh, with the quality of the, uh, guests and the speakers that we had, it was fantastic, including you there.
Okay. Thank you. Good feedback, thank you. Councillor Ennis, councillor Martin.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, I think it'd be remiss of me not to mention the, uh, the launch that was here last week, of the AFL, Tasmanian AFL team, and.
The what? What was it?
Yeah, the Devils, the Devils were up, um, unfortunately Quinn Campbell was watching it at home. And just so proud of our state, but also proud of Devonport, like there was six, um, six concurrent launches. Devonport being the one that was chosen to be broadcast nationally, um, and just, yeah, the pride, looking at the Paranormal Logo there at the, the lectern and, uh, knowing that it was just down the road was, was really great, uh, a couple of the councillors were able to go and, uh, everything I heard was, was brilliant. And that's really put Devonport on a, on a national, um, forum. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holster, do you have a question?
Sorry.
He did have a question, that's right. Uh, yeah, councillor Martin, I'll just add to that that, um, it was very nice to speak to, um, the head of AFL who said if we hadn't built this, maybe he wouldn't have turned up, so it was a bit of a analogy that he'd like to use, I think, for the other thing that they might build somewhere else. All good. Councillor Shane.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, colour points, uh, comments really, um. Note you attended these on to address the success of your launch. Um, I'd suggest attended is probably a bit of a misnomer, you seem to be running it from the skies on cattle, um. Lot of hours pointing to that, um, but, well, what a, what a great course, and I thought it was just a terrific night and very much enjoyed, um, flashback to the eighties with, um, Deputy Mayor Simpson doing catwalk. Um, but I, I really, I think that'll be the start of something big and I just want to acknowledge all the work you've put in behind this, and so I'm in the fashion shop, but just getting set up. Um, and this, uh, I just have one more project as well.
Sure.
To that, with Women's Day, uh, I'd like to congratulate council on that event, but I just want to note on behalf of the chamber, I do think perhaps next year, let's try and look at all the Women's Day events that Devonport councillors involved and see if we can sort of put together a little bit more of a strategy, because I know the chamber were struggling going head to head with the Great Time Juggernaut, um. And I think perhaps we could sort of stage that a little bit better, acknowledging that everyone seems to be doing it in the same manner.
Thank you. It's become a week of Women's Day, not just today, but that's fine. Um, yes, it looks certainly, the dress was successful, it was a wonderful event, I didn't do all the work, there was a lot of work done, I was on to, councillor Moore joined me. Um, there was the four Allison's, we're all part of it, and, and there was a lot of work done to find the scenes, um, and the ladies from dresses success through many meetings. Many discussions about everything and, and that's why I think it could turn out to be a resounding success, so congratulations to all of them. Thank you. Any further comments or questions? If not, we will ask councillor Holster to close, please.
I want a question, um, any, really coming through the link with the UAP general manager?
We, we did make with the general manager and it was a very good. We, we did meet with the general manager and it was a very good meeting. Um, he's certainly someone that's going to want to do some good things there. Um, certainly talked about the master care and what his intentions were there. He's going to have a very thorough look at it. He would love to grow, uh, what happens at that airport. So he was very, um, much on the thought that it works well. We've got two airlines there, but that doesn't mean he's going to stop there, which is great.
Thank you. Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously, thank you. Six point three is the general manager's report again. If I could have a move of?
Same move.
Councillor Murphy, and a second one?
Second.
Councillor Barney, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Uh, just me and the procedure, Mayor. One comment, uh, will be made if, if the general manager can provide councillors a little bit of an update with respect to his meetings with the state planning office around the Northern Coast region, their new strategy and the meeting with Matthew from DPAC. Um, at some point in time, we'd much appreciate it.
So you have a thinking to get back to with it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Could provide the updates with it.
Don't be, oh, thank you. Councillor Barney?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be interested to give you a bit more detail on those as well. Thank you. When they come to hand, I can further that.
Any further questions to the general manager on his report? No, councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously, thank you. Six point four is the monthly operational report. Just a little bit of light rating there. If I could have a move of the recommendation, please.
I'm going.
Councillor Hollister, thank you. And a second to close?
Second.
Councillor Murphy, councillor Hollister, please.
Actually, it was a very good report. Full of lots of useful information. So everybody should have a debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Uh, yes, Mayor, it, uh, it really does highlight the level of transparency the council does have and the fact that we're able to provide such detailed information to members of our community through this report. Congratulations, the, uh, all the zone.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from councillor Tabor? No. Councillor Member Hollister to close?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie unanimously. Uh, if we could have a move to, for the recommendation, going into closed session, please?
Second.
Uh, move at first was councillor Martin, sorry, and councillor Murphy. Had to look up at the same time. Councillor Martin?
Uh, nothing further.
Thank you, councillor Murphy.
Any decision.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Councillor Martin to close?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Same move. Uh, we're moving to closed session. Thank you. All those retaining the gallows. And we'll.